And call us main order. A roll call.
Brunner?
Here.
Gunderson?
Here.
Kim?
Here.
Janowski?
Here.
Grasmussen?
Here.
The APB is absent today.
Okay, we have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mike.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Mike. And I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
You want to make it?
Look for a motion to approve the minutes from the regular council meeting and the special council meeting, August 17th and August 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August 17th and 27th.
There is no August 27th minutes in the packet.
Okay.
It's the September 14th.
On September 14th.
Got a motion? We got a second?
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the last regular meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you say the special council meeting?
Yep.
On the 27th, right?
27th, yeah. But there's no minutes here.
They're on the table there for you.
Oh.
All right. That's the number five. So, Sir Frank, you got the four.
Thank you. Not much to report. We discussed the issue about the air conditioners because we keep listening to that one in the back getting noisier and noisier. And we're getting a bit on it and possibly having those replaced. Two main reasons for that. One of them is that they've been there since the library was built. And they say that the new ones are much more energy efficient. And with all the new laws and everything else, we just won't get on board while we stick in. And then the other issue was brought up about the salt. We're not real sure what happened there. But somebody dumped out what was in the container for the ice salt and put it right there at the root of the bushes. We'll be working on that, getting it cleaned up. And hopefully, we haven't done any damage with the last rain. Because it happened about a week ago from what we're gathering. Other than that, I don't know anything else right now that, unless you have some questions, that I'd be happy to answer.
Anybody got a question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Frank.
And we'll go to committee reports. Finance Committee, Keith.
All right, on behalf of the Finance Committee, I'll start making some motions here. First motion I'll make is to approve the change order number one for total for $13,163 for contract C-15. I'll second that.
Who's C-15?
C-15 is the City Hall project.
City Hall, okay.
And this change order is a result of, from demolition on the antique mall building, 105 East Main. They found under the flooring, there were two other layers of like a tile that had a lead that had to be dealt with a little bit more in depth than just tossing it out. So that's the one cost. The other cost is when they started taking down walls upstairs, the roof was more securely fastened to the walls, the interior walls than it was to the exterior. And so the back, five to six percent of the roof, maybe about six, seven feet, just came down when they started taking out. So they replaced the roof in that area. That's what those two change orders, or the change orders for those items.
Okay. Do I have a motion on that?
Yep, you got a motion, yes, I can.
Change order for $13,163. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Next one.
Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve pay request number two on contract fifteen, C-15, for a total of $141,802.88, which, from our standards, is a slightly revised amount from what we discussed during our committee meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded to approve it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Number three.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Fire Department and Joint Meeting Pay Modifications. Just so everybody knows what that is, is there's the Fire Commission that one of the committee members has to go to. So they would be paid for that. They would just need to bring in the, or get the minutes from that meeting to get that. And then also, if we do have a joint meeting, say like Public Works and Finance has a joint one, it'll be paid for once. It's not a two payer. If there are two separate meetings, then you get paid for each meeting. But otherwise, if it's a joint meeting, it's technically one meeting.
I guess my question is, what's different about that? We always got paid for that meeting.
It's not defined.
I never did for two years.
That's because you didn't turn in the minutes.
Didn't have to.
Yeah.
Don Morgan said you didn't get paid for it.
So what we're looking for...
We always did.
I never got paid last time I was on it either. I never looked for it either.
So we, the reason we brought it up...
Chucked a high around there, we always got, all you do is turn in the minutes.
Yep, but it's not written down anywhere. So this is making it in the books so that way, no matter who the administrator or who the pay people are, they know what they're supposed to do.
We, that's, and that's what we asked for, was just to get it formalized on what meetings you get paid for and then how. Because...
Now it's in writing.
When we looked back into 2012, which was three, four years, it doesn't look like anybody's been paid for three, four years. So it goes back a little bit further than just myself and Trina coming on board. We just wanted to make sure if there's an actual process. If you're going to get paid for it, that's one thing. How do you get paid for it? Because on your standing committee meetings, we pay off the minutes that we generate in-house. So that was the thought on directing somebody to get them here from the Fire District. And then on the joint meetings, if you've got members that are, you know, a member of Finance and Public Works and they joint meet together, then it would be just one payment. Now, on both of those items, the question that I have is whether there's any reach back at all with this or whether you want to have this policy take effect tonight going forward. So the thought is, there's some Fire District meetings that had been probably attended that weren't paid for. And I don't have all the numbers on the joint meetings, but I also understand that there's some joint meetings that perhaps members got paid twice for. Again, because there wasn't anything written down that said it's one meeting or it's two or it's none. So on either one of them, you know, if you want to go back to the start of this term, which would have been mid-April, I don't know that you can go back any further at all to either back pay or adjust payback because some members aren't employees or officials of the city anymore.
I guess make it simple.
Yeah.
Right now, starting now.
Start from now on and don't worry about going back.
Either way.
Do you have a motion?
I would, I would do that so that we got something formal for record too, that if, when you look back five years from now.
I guess I'll amend my motion then for the pay modification and Fire Department pay for city officials to state that that starts as of today. No back pay or...
Adjusting back or whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, if I got a second, but I'll second that. All right. Everybody understand it? Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you.
All right, next, I'd like to make a motion to approve the checks number 31679 through 31739, totaling $532,413.54 in the monthly financial statements. I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, and I'm sure you all read all of them over. Anybody got any questions? All in favor say aye.
That's a roll call.
Oh, that's a roll call, yeah.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Janowski?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Grasmussen?
Aye.
Five Ice.
Motion carried, thank you. Down to B, Public Works. Bruce.
I'd like to make a motion to approve contract A-15 pay request number three to Myron for $455,924.19.
Second it.
Have a second? Second? And that's obviously for the wastewater treatment plant. There's construction going on.
Excuse me, this is pay number, what? Number three, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Anybody have any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
I'd also like to recommend approval, or make a motion, contract B-15 change order number three for $7,202.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, can you tell us what change order it is?
Yep, so B-15 is the Lake Shore Drive, Third Avenue work.
Okay.
The change order here, actually, items number two and three, if you look at page two of the change order, it explains line by line what they are. Items number two and three, you actually approved in concept last month. When we were talking about widening the intersection, we talked about the DOT not allowing us to just leave flat top grades for the storm shore in the road where they are today. So we had to actually dig them out, relocate them into the curb. Reconstructing both of the catch basins on each side of Lake Shore Drive was $3,450. The, number two is a $1,000 item in lieu of a full reconnection to one of the water services. The contractor, instead of laying a new one, had gone to a hydrant and installed a sleeve that was $1,000. That's on the Lake Shore Drive. And then the other item is unrelated to Lake Shore Drive, but it's, it's an item for a catch basin that we had replaced on East Parker Street, just across the street from Steve Ebert's house. Basically, what we had, there was a hole in the road. Water wasn't getting into the curb into the catch basin. It actually developed a pretty big sinkhole there. And the catch basin and the vault were actually roding away. We went out and got some quotes. And DeGroot had been the most advantageous quote for that work. And what we found was that if we included it with contract B-15, we would also pick up a two-year warranty on that work as well. So that was $2,752 to reconstruct that storm catch basin. That's what adds up to $7,202. And again, on the storm and the water, so items two and three, those are the items that are subject to the cost share with OCS on that project. So it's, we don't, the city's not on the hook for all of that. We're probably on the hook for less than half. We'd end up billing it to OCS later.
Everybody understand it? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve contract B-15 pay request number three for $78,901.77.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Yeah, this one. Anybody got any questions? Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Down to C, Police and Fire. Mike?
Nothing at this time.
Public Health. Keith.
Nothing at this time.
Rec. Committee.
All right, I'd like to make a motion. Hold turkey treating on Saturday, October 31st from 4 until 6 p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, thank you. We got to make sure we get that published, huh? People know it's got date or whatever.
Yep, we'll let them get in the water bill. Then we can get it...
Down to F, Public Property.
Nothing for committee at this time.
Thank you. Planning Commission. Uh, we got number one. This is kind of after the fact, but we already approved it once before. Recommend approval for permit for weigaboters sign on Mill Street. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign for weigaboters. Sign along east north. 71 North Mill Street.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Recommendation, corner lot zoning modifications.
Becky's looking for who had the second on that one.
Thank you.
Scott. Now, this is the fourth time we've gone over these, but the recommendation, corner lot zoning modification.
I have a note on there, on the agenda, and it's more procedural in nature. In order to change these ordinances, you have to actually draft individual ordinances for every section that you're looking to change. And what I had proposed on the agenda is that we would schedule either later this week or by next Monday, based on what you do tonight, a special meeting, draft up the ordinances that we need. Because there's, for each section, it refers to two or three other sections. And there's some clarity that we probably need from you guys, depending on how you'd like to move forward on these recommendations. But procedurally, we don't have the ordinances drafted right now because we need a little bit more clarity on how many zones. Is it just residential zones that are affected? All the different types of attached garages, detached garages, attached sheds, detached sheds. Those all need to be modified. And I think that's the intent, but we just need to get ordinances drafted for all of those. And we can do it in a couple days, based on what your wishes are tonight.
I guess that's what we got to do, just to make all the legal beagles happy out there with the change. The wording on a few of them. And I guess quicker we get that done, the less we'll have to deal with it again.
I think it would help, I mean, if you want to take it up yet tonight, it might help to have your votes and your discussion to narrow in on the ordinances. And I mean, I can, the only note that I really have is, so you got number one, which is the new language identifying a primary front yard. That you would just replace the definition of a front lot line. So that's, that's easy enough. Number two, reducing the setback then on the corresponding secondary front yard from 25 feet to 15 feet. We don't have anything in there that just says residential districts, but we have four residential districts. And I think the intent is District R1 and R2, which is these low and medium density houses, are the two that you want to narrow in on. R3 is typically multifamily duplexes and apartments. And if they're on a corner lot, the duplexes usually take care of themselves with the garages. But, but to clarify that it's R1 and R2, that would be good. And then number three then, chapter 53087 deals with accessory buildings. And that's where we're looking at. If you've established a secondary front yard and if you've established that there's a 15-foot reduced setback, right now, the ordinance doesn't let you build into the front yard. And so you'd have to cross-reference 53087, B1, B2, B3, B4, B5, all those sections which refers to the different types of things you can build so that you can then allow people to build into that 10-foot section. And the problem is, and of course, this is how it happens, is in B2, B3, B4, and B5, it's worded and describes that new space you could build into. It's worded right now differently in each one of them. And so some of them you have to amend, some of them you have to take the language out. Like I said, it's more procedural in nature, but it would help if there's clarity from you guys on what exactly it is that you'd like to do. And within a week, I think we could get everything cleaned up and, you know, sent back according to your wishes, so.
All right, and my question is, how do you want us to word this motion? Just to make it the easiest for you.
So for number one, the way your recommendation is now, like I said, that's just pretty straightforward. That's 530124, which is just the definition. So that one's fine. Number two then is if you consider reducing setback on the secondary front lot line from 25 feet to 15 feet, that one would, you might want to put the caveat that it only applies to zoning District R1 and R2.
Is that what the Plans Commission discussed then?
Yeah.
In general, that's what they assume. That's, those are the ones we...
We didn't discuss it, but we assumed it.
Right. And when you change the ordinance, you have to have specific language of what you're looking to do there. Especially because these are all different ordinance numbers too.
Can we just make a motion?
I think it should be split to three.
Yeah, I mean, you could take all three of them up individually if you like. And if you make motions on that, vote on it. You can. Because when the official ordinances come through, the ordinances are going to split it up even further than what you have it. But it's at least going to reflect whatever the intent of the council is. So really, on number two, the only clarification you need is if you're looking at zoning District R1 and R2. Now, on number three, that pretty much takes care of itself. We just need individual ordinances drafted. According to each line, some of them say, try to stay out of the front yard. Some of them say, stay into the side yard. And some others say, neither front nor side. It just says setback. So we can take care of it. It's, it's just, I think really what you'll want to do is number two, just if it's R1 and R2, maybe put a caveat on that.
If it is R1 and R2?
Yeah.
And you, we would vote to proceed with that 15 feet? Are there any homes in the area that would actually be blocking the sidewalk if they parked their car in there?
Homes that are built right now?
Obstruction of the pathway for pedestrians.
If, if they park their vehicle in the driveway and if it's over a sidewalk, your parking ordinance says you can't park on the sidewalk. And if you don't have a sidewalk, it says you can park in the right of way, but up to four feet away from the curb.
All right. So Scott's discussing, what I discussed last time is that if we make it 15 feet, we have conflicting ordinances. We have one ordinance that says you can't park and cross the sidewalk. And then you have another ordinance that says, go ahead, park on the sidewalk.
Well, does it say that though, or is it just saying without a sign?
Well, I think it assumes that the sidewalk is built somewhere in the right of way. But if you don't have a sidewalk, you probably don't have a conflict for the way this is written. So if there's no sidewalk we're looking to build, it's probably not a conflict because you get up to 24 to 25 feet to try to park legally. And that's not a problem. If you have a sidewalk, it depends on how wide the right of way is. Where's the sidewalk? You know, some of them are right off the curb, which means you have room on the back. Some of them have a terrace.
Making it 20 feet doesn't stop anybody that's looking right now from building. It doesn't affect anybody. The only thing it does is ensures that you don't have the sidewalk issue.
Sidewalks uncovered.
But it's not going to stop anybody that's looking right now to build a garage from building a garage.
We've already voted three times to approve 15 feet. And I can't believe we're discussing this again.
This is the first time I've...
This is the first time I've ever come to vote for me. I've never voted for it. This is the first I heard it.
What was the Plan Commission's feelings on this?
It was split.
Plan Commission voted in favor of 15 feet.
Those that voted did, yes. A gentleman sitting next to me told me that he didn't vote because he wasn't sure of a number of things. But the Plan Commission vote is not binding.
No, it's not binding, that's true.
I guess I'm... So we're back to square one, now you got us all confused.
No, we're not back to square one, really. You have, we have two or three things settled. And the point I'm making is that at 20 feet, everybody that's looking to build can build.
You're wrong.
I'm not wrong.
Yes, you are.
And it...
Very wrong.
And who would that be?
Okay, if you're, if you're, I guess my, my question is, why are we looking to change it? Number one, because if we start changing ordinances, we're going to have a lot of people in here looking to change other ordinances. We're going to have, the chicken people will be back and all these other ones. Second of all, if we go to 15 feet and you have a 16-foot boat and you have a trailer on it...
Yeah, you can't park it on the driveway, it's plain and simple.
You can't park it in the driveway. So what are you going to do, park it on the street? Well, we can't have them on the street. Can't have just a trailer and a boat sitting on the street for, you know. So to me, I guess it's, it was put this way for a purpose. I guess I'd just, I'd just as soon leave it the way it is.
I'd like to ask why they, where 25 foot originally came from, what the city fathers were thinking at the time when they drafted the ordinance to 25 feet. That's what I would really like to know. Do you have some history on that?
See, yeah, it is, six, eight years ago, we had to do the same thing with garages. Because the way it was drafted, basically, you couldn't not build a garage. And we had to change it to, it took a lot of different numbers and a lot of, we ended up going by lot sizes and house sizes and finally, we agreed on 60-foot, 90-foot, 120-foot lots. Type in, type in size of garage you can build. And it went over good. And now this one comes up and we've got about six, if not eight, people right now on corner lots that with the 25 feet, they cannot build a garage. We've got a guy over, I can't think of the name of it, but Dennis Yorxson, he'd like to put a garage up. He doesn't have one at all in his house. It faces one street, he wants to put a garage on the side. According to this ordinance, he can't. We've got one over on East Street. His garage burnt down. And if you measure it, it's 15 feet exactly. He can't, they won't let him rebuild that garage if you've got to go to 25 feet or even 20 feet. And we've got the Hill Scotters right here with the same basic problem. There's a garage there right now, right up to the street. They want to tear that down, build a new one, but this one will be back 15 feet instead of on the street like this one is now. That's why we're trying to change it. And it only refers to a corner lot. It's the opposite of the front of the house for your backyard, basically. We're just trying to solve several problems here. So, we're back to square one again. What, if we make a motion here?
I, I would suggest you go maybe line by line on the recommendations. So you got number one, on the one sheet here. Number one is consider the new language identifying a primary front yard on the corner lot. That's the language that Attorney County drafted. They tried to set a standard on what your front, front door is, what your front yard is.
Is that located in the other packet? That one you're talking about there?
Yep. That one was at the ordinance committee, it was at the last council meeting, it was at the Plan Commission. And then it's here for its fourth visit tonight. Basically, in this, you look at your neighbor. If you have an interior lot neighbor, wherever their house faces is your front yard. And if you don't have a neighbor, then you take the shortest of your two or more lots. So if you've got like 60 feet on one side and 120 on the other, your shortest line frontage would be considered your front. So it's, it's at least a standard that it's not up to interpretation. It's pretty straightforward. On our end, I think it's probably a pretty reasonable definition. And I think, I don't know that I've heard anybody have any qualms about it in any of the meetings at all. So I, I don't know, I don't think there's any disagreement on that language, or I haven't heard any. And then the idea of reducing the setback, I mean, you're, you're setting that new language to allow for number two, which means that one of your yards is not going to be the same as the other. I don't know that there's been a whole lot of concern raised about that. I think maybe the concern you've got is what should that number be? And right now, it's 25 feet on R1 and R2. And then for number three then, I don't think anybody's complained or I haven't heard anything about, if you reduce it then, there's new area that people can use to build a garage or a shed. I don't think anybody's really complained about that either, about being able to build into that area. there's new area that people can use to build a garage or a shed. I don't think anybody's really complained about that either, about being able to build into that area. So one and three, I'm not going to speak for you and say everybody's for it, but the three meetings we've had on it, everybody seemed pretty supportive of that. And then number two, like I said, in concept, reducing one yard, I think that's been generally out there, and it's just a matter of what's that number. And again, it's just corner lots, and it's just the side. Whatever's not your front yard.
So there's other ordinances though that do cover the fact that you can't have stuff hanging out in the road and all the other items. You can't block sidewalks.
That's what parking ordinances are.
Right. I just don't like an ordinance that supersede, or conflicts another ordinance.
Well, it doesn't, as long as people follow those.
It does. It does. It, it conflicts the other ordinance.
The thought in theory is, if, if you allow, if, if there's a conflict, the conflict would be legally, you're not, you can't park a vehicle that's longer than 15 feet, in theory, in your driveway. But if you park your car in your garage all the time, you don't have a problem. If you don't have a sidewalk, you don't have a problem, you know, it's.
That's common sense. You can't park on a sidewalk. I mean, that's.
Not everyone's got that. Well, we're getting nowhere. Well, the first thing is really, considering that language, I think, I read that, what Kelney said, and I think we should discuss that and, and move forward with that one first.
Yeah, number one, I don't see any problem with that.
I, I don't either. It gives good definition and good language there on, on what is considered the primary front yard. Which is what we've needed.
Make a motion if we can approve it, so we can move on.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion to consider the new language identifying a primary front yard on a corner lot.
As stated in our pack.
As stated by City Attorney Kelney.
Entire, for the motions, you want the whole?
Should be clear enough, isn't it?
No, we've read it out. It's if you use the city attorney's.
Okay.
Recommended.
Yes.
Definition, yeah, we have that.
Okay, I'll second it.
Alright. Motion being accepted on approving the description of the corner lot, basically. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Next item you might want to take up then is just the idea of that secondary lot having a reduced setback. So maybe not the number, but are you in favor of reducing it first? Because if you're not, well then it doesn't matter what the number is. It's got to be 25 feet. And, and again, these are advisory, I mean, they're, they're motions you're making, but it helps to draft what the ordinances are going to be anyway, you know? And sort of works you through this topic.
Yeah, I guess, looking at, we already have garages that are within 15 feet of the road as it is today. And if the ordinance still cover that you can't park on a sidewalk and you can't have your, you know, the butt of a truck or something hanging out in the road. I don't know that it really changes much, besides for the people that it matters. I mean, I don't think it changes much for any of us.
Alright, it does matter for those people. Like I say, the guy with the garage that burnt down, how'd you like to even sell someday?
Yeah.
You know, it's like, where's your garage?
I don't know. You see any problem with it? Jerry?
It hasn't been an issue. That doesn't mean it wouldn't be.
Yeah.
Because that common sense is what you want to prevail, but that's not always necessarily the case.
I think if they got visited once or twice, they'd probably figure it out.
Yeah. I mean, if we say that this is the only ordinance that, I mean, every ordinance is being taken advantage of in every corner of the city. But yeah, we realize there's priorities in what we're doing in the city, Tyler, you know, I mean, reality, common sense, it's, so this one shouldn't be picked out any different and say that something terrible's going to happen.
Alright, make a motion. Well, I'm looking to see if anybody's got any other, I guess, discussion points on, you know, why we shouldn't, why we should look at it differently. Because I guess, I, I know I've seen, since this has been just brought up, I just kind of look, and I've seen a lot of garages that are.
Has anyone read, read the discussion from the planning commission?
Yep.
Alright. And this does pertain to corner lots only?
I think we should make a motion to review the setback limits.
We've been reviewing for four months already, at least four meetings.
Well, I guess the one thing, yeah, there was, and I heard about this and you can kind of tell on the video, that there's some questions on whether or not everybody actually understood every part of that discussion that was happening there about the setback.
I could say, just being there, I know a lot of it veered towards that parking issue. I mean, the rest of it is pretty well spelled out. You know, a lot of it's on setbacks, corner lots, garages. So I hate to jump in, but I will. Are you beyond the idea of whether or not to reduce that setback? Are you on to the number, or do you even want to vote them separately on whether, or do you think you're?
I'll, I'll make a motion to reduce the setback on the secondary front yard for corner lots.
Going to hold off on a footage?
Well, that's what I'm debating, is whether or not we just have the plans commission just take a look at the footage again and make sure they understand.
I was there, and there's no reason to take a look again.
Yeah, we've, we've.
There's nobody that's any dumber on that than on here, or smarter.
Because when I heard, there was just a lot of confusion. That's my only concern. And I haven't looked, you know, into, you know, what all effects 15 feet might have across the city. I just know.
The whole reason we're here is because of 15 feet. If it doesn't go through, there's no sense of this even being here. Because this is what this was all brought up about. Because we have so many people that can't build a garage because of that rule. And yet, nobody knows when it was put in the books, or why. But now it's a problem.
Yes, I don't see a huge issue at the 15 feet, so I'll make a motion to put it to 15 feet.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion made and seconded. We ready for our vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
Nay? Nay. I'm not comfortable with that.
Do we need to look at number three then, or?
Maybe back up to the idea of reducing that setback. Is the hang up on reducing it, or is the hang up on the actual number? And the other thing, I mean, that might help you out too, is that this comes back to you if it's next week. You would have, you'd hope, all seven of you present on the vote on the actual ordinance anyway, so unless you're, I mean, whatever you do tonight's not going to be the final vote on it anyway, you know?
So you're talking about just making a motion just to reduce the setback, or the idea of it?
Yeah, unless you want to discuss why there were no votes, or why.
And if there's, you know, I mean, does 20 feet make the difference for you guys?
Well, it makes a heck of a lot of difference to someone that overfights, for five feet, they can't build. But I guess the rest of us that have garages are just happy as can be.
You know, I read this, and the first thing I think of is that gentleman you've made mention of that had the garage that burned down. He's got a slab, and now he can't build them. I don't think that's right. That bothers me. That, that, that does bother me.
One of the reasons we're trying to correct the problem.
And this other guy on.
But I think that, that one could have been, at the time, could have been grandfathered in.
But it could have been rebuilt, but the problem was they didn't own it at the time. So you have a year to rebuild where it was.
It burnt with somebody, it burnt with somebody else, and then he ended up buying it, thinking he could build there, and then of course, he said he couldn't.
That to me is an injustice. That doesn't sit right with me.
So it was like the guy over on South Street that it's a straight, and the garage, like most ranch houses like that, would just be connected right on. You know, just normal, and he can't. So there sits, go look at all the stuff that sits in the yard. I mean, not that some of it might not be there, like everybody else has too, but can't put the vehicle in, vehicle or two. Be the most normal thing, just to add on that over many foot.
Bunch of new garages, it's more tax value.
It's an eyesore not to have, you know what I mean? It's just, and that, that goes on to other situations too, but different.
Are you for or against the idea of reducing the setback?
I'm for it. I'm for it.
I mean, if, if you would take a vote on that, and, and it ends up saying that you don't want to reduce it, well, it's going to save a lot of work in drafting the ordinances. Whereas if the hang up is if it's 15 feet, or 20 feet, or 18 feet, or whatever, the only thing you've got to change is to plug in whatever that number's going to be in the ordinance, and take it out.
What is the exact measurement of the people that are, that have the, the foundation there? Do we know what that is? Is it right at 15?
Well, he said it's right at 15.
It's exactly 15.
Right at 15.
He's got a perfect foundation there. They told me couldn't put a garage on it.
According to the code, yeah? Because we don't like garages.
Same with Dennis Yorxson.
He said the tax values.
Got a three-bedroom house, but he wants to put a garage on it, he can't.
I mean, I guess the way I look at it too is that, even if we add it at 25 feet and somebody wanted to park on a sidewalk, they could park on a sidewalk just as easy if their garage was at 25 feet or 15 feet. It's all about making a choice.
Right, and that same person might park there for five years without anybody saying a thing, hanging over the sidewalk, and then one day, whatever, you know, just.
So I mean, I know we talk about, you know, common sense tells you not to, not everybody has common sense, but I mean, you have to give people credit too. And that's why you have other ordinances that take care of it.
There's a reality factor too. I mean, gosh, people, you could say people aren't dumb. They know that they got to take their trash out on Tuesday. They know that they got to check their blind spot. They know, you know, it's just, I don't know what we're trying to create with 25 feet, you know? Does that make it a more perfect Waiega, or less perfect? We're here to help the people out that need something, and I, I see needs, at least three of them mentioned, if not four.
And that's what I'm thinking about right now is.
Oh gee, I want to.
It's not a frivolous, frivolous request.
We're not here to just, you know, oh, I don't understand what I'm reading here on the screen, so I, I don't, you know, I guess maybe I'm picking on you, so I'm uncomfortable with it, but.
That's alright. I like to be, make sure that I am thorough and I understand.
Yeah, and we also, we also have to do our homework ahead of time too, you know?
So what do we set right now?
Right now, the motion was shut down.
Now, they're, you want to make a motion just to approve setting, changing the setback without a number?
And then you said that helps you out?
I could keep it moving forward, because if we're, if we've got to draft the ordinance and change it to reflect the.
Then you just have to drop in a number.
Reduce setback, then you just pop in a number on your final vote, and then.
Alright, well, I'll make a motion then to reduce the setback on secondary front yards. Footage to be defined at a later time.
I'll second that. Motion made, been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then the third recommendation they have then is to allow accessory buildings into that area that you're reducing the setback in.
Right, I'll make a motion to allow second, or accessory buildings to be built in the secondary front yard. Be subject to the new setback amount for secondary front yards. Does that make sense? It's kind of worded. Interesting. I had to say secondary front yard.
Okay, so, all this talk, I'm not good at hearing. Did you just make a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Was it a good one?
They're all good ones.
Okay, then I'll second it.
It's a required one to move it forward, yes.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Do you have the framework then? The only thing that you've got out there is what that amount's going to be, 15 feet, 20 feet? And then it's probably up to you guys whether you want to discuss that tonight, or, you know, hopefully maybe next Monday night? Or, it's up to you guys.
Are we going to hold an ordinance meeting before then?
An ordinance meeting?
To, to get this all done?
Well, in theory, you're going to have all these things put out there already.
Okay.
So this one comes out of the plan commission, and the plan commission makes the recommendations.
Right.
And then they just have to be drafted into ordinance form. Which we can get, so it can go right to a special council meeting.
Go straight to council? Okay.
Would everybody be available next Monday night? Or this week? I mean, it's, next Monday night's probably the best.
I would prefer next Monday night, but I can work my schedule, I guess.
Like at 6 o'clock? Does that work with me?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Nick, you take over. I gotta go.
Okay, take care.
So we're going to discuss some more tonight, or you want to let it go till Monday?
I don't think it's, there's any purpose in discussing more tonight.
It really isn't.
Yeah, I could tell when the balloon's empty, and just going to fly up in the breeze.
Alright, then we'll move on to new business.
Okay.
And since I can make motions. We all set over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's ensure, sure what you're.
Yeah, I'll get out of your way.
Get my phone for Eller's in a little bit, so.
Oh, that's right. Okay, so.
I'm going to make a motion.
Huh?
Oh, you can.
You can if you want to.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to, it says, review operator's license for Christine Roloff and McCarrollan DeGel Amadas.
That's why I want you to make the motion.
For Waiega Stargary.
Nice.
Is there a reason we're reviewing them, or are they? Is there a reason we're reviewing them, or are we recommending them?
They're both.
We're recommending them for approval.
Right, well, it says review, but.
It says review, but.
Review the police chief's recommendation on whether or not to approve.
So we're recommending it, so I will make the motion then.
To actually approve, your vote would be to actually approve or actually not approve.
Right.
It's been on the agenda like this for the last couple of months. Every time we've had an operator's license.
One of us should pay attention then. Are you making a motion?
Yes, I did.
I'll second that motion. Motion in second, all in favor to approve licenses?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the Class A combination liquor malt beverage license for Dan Truman Outagame Co-op Services Incorporated.
Second.
And we have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're on a roll.
Make a motion to approve the application for cigarette license for Outagame County, Outagame Co-op Services Incorporated.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You didn't ask for a post.
Are you opposed?
Nay. Yes, nay. I don't think anyone should be smoking.
Okay.
I agree.
I'll make a motion to pass, uh, Resolution five seventy-two, waive the reading on a resolution while raising the city administrator to file DNR. Urban Forestry Grant Application on behalf of the City of Waioaiga.
Second it.
We have a motion in second. Do we need a roll call on that, or can we just roll call?
Gunderson?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasperson?
Aye.
Hudoski?
Aye.
I will make a motion then to approve Resolution number five seventy-three, waive the reading. Final, final resolution loving special assessments against benefited property for curb, gutter, and driveway upgrades on East Alfred Street.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second.
There's a, a couple items you wanna have pointed out on that. And that's, we did have the public hearing, which was at the September fourteenth Public Works Meeting. Before that, we had in June of twenty fourteen, the preliminary hearing and the preliminary resolution that notified the public that we were going to exercise the ability to special assess. So we followed that, that's, that's contained within the resolution here. Uh, notices were mailed to the affected property owners. We had filed notice for that public hearing in the paper on September third. Again, we had the hearing on September fourteenth. Um, the final engineer's report for the curb and gutter and the driveway upgrades for East Alfred Street is in your packet, it was made available for the public hearing. In that final report, it does have, um, some information on the total costs for the whole project, which is by law, we have to put that out there to the public, which we did. Uh, we also have to put out what the city's share was, being that it was a county project, roughly forty percent of the roadway was our share. And with that, on the curb and gutter. Residents are only being charged for what the city's actual share of the curb and gutter was too, so they're not paying the full one hundred percent of what it would be. And you'll see, the curb and gutter is based off of footage, foot, frontage on East Alfred Street, that's in that spreadsheet. And then also, um, if a resident had an asphalt driveway or a concrete driveway and we tore it out, we'd put back whatever was there before at no charge. Um, if anybody wanted to upgrade the asphalt on their approaches, we did that, but we also charged for it, and that's highlighted in blue on this, uh, spreadsheet. And then there's a couple addresses, seven oh six and seven oh eight, East Alfred. They're charged for a new asphalt driveway, but they're on the north side of the road. And because we put in sidewalk at the city's expense on the north side. We didn't wanna have, uh, the road surface, concrete curb and gutter, asphalt approach, and then concrete sidewalk. So what we did is we charged them for the asphalt, but we put in concrete approaches so that it's, um, some continuity there. And then, uh, the final column that you'll have here is the, uh, total assessment column. And what we're looking to assess, uh, is twelve thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. Off of that, what we will, um, allow the public to choose is whether they'd like to pay their amount upfront. Or whether they would like to finance it over five years or up to five years. And when they finance it, what we do is we put a share on their property taxes. And what the recommendation, I believe, was from a year ago, was that we would charge an interest rate of three percent. Which, at the time, and I think even still now, is still cheaper than what, if people had to go borrow from the bank to pay for it, it's cheaper than financing it that way. But if people wanted to pay upfront, there would be no interest charge. In the resolution, it lays out, they have that option to pay it off upfront or over five years with three percent interest. And with that, then, if you're in favor of all those things, um, all these costs, your vote in the resolution then ends up, uh, actually creating the assessment, and we would then send out invoices to these property owners. Okay?
So we have a motion in a second? Everybody understands everything now? Guess we need a roll call.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasperson?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Hudoski?
Aye.
All ayes.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution five seventy-four, revolute, revolution, yeah. Resolution approving the project plan and establishing the boundaries for the creation of a tax increment district number seven.
Before you vote, forget a motion on that. Uh, we will hook in with John Cameron from Ellers. He's going to work through the project plan with you.
You're doing a hell of a job.
But we have to have a motion in a second before we can talk about it, right?
You can, yeah, I mean, you can, but.
Okay.
Before you hear exactly what it is that he's recommending, uh, either way, either way. You just have to remember, when he's done talking, you just have to remember what you did on the front end, and what you have to still do on the back end. Do you have a preference?
We'll talk to him first.
Okay.
Then we'll.
Yeah.
Because we're old and we'll forget before.
I'll leave my recommendation out there.
Let it in. Alright. James comes to the phone right now.
Bro. He just texted me and I, I gave him an update on the time, told him seven thirty, so.
There were two minutes.
And he got back to me, and he got back to me, so.
He says, I got time, you quick run out and grab a sandwich.
Hi, John Patrick from Waioaiga. We are up to your item, uh, on the resolution for the TID, and I will, and we're in open session, so I'll put you on speakerphone. And you do have five members of the city council, myself, the police chief, Becky, and Frank Zavoy from the public here.
Okay. How do you think everybody?
Good evening. Oh.
What I'd like to do is just, uh, go through a, a little bit of the project plan and then, uh, uh, turn it over if you have any, any questions. Um, so the resolution that you have before you this evening is for, uh, the approval of tax incremental finance district number seven. Uh, that's proposed to be treated as, uh, a mixed use district with a maximum life of twenty years. Just, uh, pulling out a couple sections of the project plan, um, I'm specifically looking at page four of the plan right now under the executive summary. What we're, what we've tentatively identified in this plan, uh, keeping in mind that it is, you know, a plan, is, uh, total project expenditures of just over eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. For infrastructure costs. Uh, it's anticipated that the projects would really be undertaken in two different phases. Most of the cost would be really in the second phase. And, and what the, the city has tentatively identified, uh, is the desire for, uh, a hotel development. Right, you know, on the, on the parcel, the primary parcel that's, uh, makes up Kid number seven. Um, so most of the infrastructure cost is really associated with, uh, those items within, uh, that second phase. Within the development itself, what we've identified in the plan is in order to be able to support eight hundred and nine thousand dollars in project cost. Uh, the district needs to generate approximately three point nine million dollars of, uh, equalized value, uh, taxable value that would come out of the new development, then Kid seven. That's, uh, right now, that's a, a backed into number, uh, in order to make, you know, the, the, the cost within the project plan go. Uh, really, right now, the only thing that we do know is, uh, the convenience store that's, uh, you know, currently, uh, under construction, uh, next to the subway. So, most of the development, you know, in terms of equalized value, would be associated with the, with the future hotel development. Um, if you were to potentially fall short of that projection of the three, three point nine million dollars, really what the project plan is telling you is that, uh, the developer would have to, uh, most likely step in and, and, and bridge the gap on the, on the costs. But if the development were to occur as you've outlined in the plan, uh, the district would recover all project costs by the year two thousand and thirty-one. Uh, which is four years earlier than the maximum, uh, twenty-year life of the district, so. The project plan itself is the same plan that was, uh, shown to the Joint Review Board, um, as well as the, um, Plan Commission, uh, that's on September the first, so. Uh, with that, um, I will turn it back over to, uh, the council and see if you have any questions.
I have no questions.
Just to, to clarify a little bit, at the Plan Commission, I know it was brought up. Wondering if the city took on infrastructure improvements, uh, and maybe no development happened there, or not enough development happened there. The question was, would the city be behind in trying to pay for those? And the answer is no, because the development thems, the developments themselves would require extending the road, extending water and sewer. And if the developments don't happen, the project costs don't get accrued either. Because if, if there is no project.
I see most of those costs associated with that second phase development, so it's really only if the development were to happen, uh, then the infrastructure costs would, would happen, so I was the right pitch, because you say if, if the development doesn't occur, you don't, you don't make the expenditures. But what you do put into place tonight is the, the mechanism to recover those costs. So, um, you know, that's, that's really what, what the TID allows you to do.
And like John said, uh, September first, you've got the Joint Review Board and the Plan Commission, we had them both here, we filmed them both. John was here, went through this all pretty much line by line, so if there's any question, it's, it is online at both of those meetings, so. Any other questions or anything?
No.
I have none.
Okay. So then, then where you left, you didn't, I don't think you took a motion then on the, the resolution?
We have a, a, a motion that's just hanging out there waiting for a second. And I'll second it. Any questions on anything? We have a motion second, roll call.
Gunderson?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Rasperson?
Aye.
Ken?
Aye.
Hudoski?
Aye.
Here with five ayes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, John.
Okay, thank you guys, have a good evening.
You too, John.
Take care.
Okay. You too, come on.
Alright. Item G is the border review appointments by mayor. Mayor's not here, but we don't have any names anyway. We are in desperate need of two able-bodied citizens by next week, correct?
Yes. Yeah, so the border review, what, what's going to help is if you have the special council meeting on Monday, on the twenty-eighth. The border review is going to meet on the thirtieth, which is the last possible day they can, and again, we waited to see if we came back into compliance with the state this year, rather than doing this like in April, May. And we did come back into compliance, so then we don't have to take on the expense of a full revaluation.
No worries.
We don't have to, I mean, we can, but we don't have to. September thirtieth is the very last day, you can schedule it, it's been noticed. And, and I can tell you, in speaking with the mayor, he did have one name that was confirmed. And then another that he was still confirming with. But, right now we have two vacancies, and we need them filled before the meeting on the thirtieth. So if you have the meeting on the twenty-eighth, that would help. But, we do have those two vacancies. And I did not hear if the second had been confirmed.
So you, will you be able to get a hold of them by Friday, so they can get on the agenda for Monday?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we can do that.
And how many other vacant, vacancies do we have?
I know of probably six, seven, two on the border review, uh, we've had two people moved that were on the Board of Appeals.
Three on Board of Appeals, one on Plan Commission. Two on border review.
We need two on Board of Appeals? Or we need two?
We actually need three.
Three on Board of Appeals?
One per alternate and two alternates.
Okay. And what was the other one, one on what?
Planning.
Planning? And how long have they been vacant?
A while.
While?
I'd have to look back. Some, a couple of them from last November.
So we're at a point.
At least since April, when, when the new council was sworn in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought Planning Commission was full.
We had resignation.
We had one, okay.
Yeah. Two, actually, and then, we had two resigns, one to replace.
Okay.
So we're still one short.
At what point is it that the council can make a recommendation?
I believe you're at that point.
We're at that point, the council cannot make a recommendation?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so, I guess I would ask that everybody knock on their neighbor's door, see if we can't find somebody.
He's sitting right there.
You know, he's saying, he wants to too. You can just tell. You can see it in his eyes.
He doesn't like being involved in stuff.
Alright, but if we could, if we desperately need to get these filled, it's been, it's been a long time coming.
I, I've looked into them eyes, let me tell you that if, when this meeting's over, you better run.
Okay. So. Number eight is the mayor's report. He's not here, but. Maybe I'll just take a chance to speak. I, uh. I personally am opposed, uh, an ordinance is a law. And I'm opposed to changing ordinances on a whim. I, I, I think we have to look at the city as a whole in everything we do, and, and weigh out what's best for the entire city. Which sometimes isn't always the easiest, but I think we're here to represent the entire city.
True.
Patrick? Administrator's report?
We're working on the budget, um, we are getting in the final numbers from the state, uh, shared revenues, which the trend has reversed a little bit, and that's not, that's actually gone up a little bit, so that's good. Uh, we're still waiting on the state highway aid, which is historically always being cut, road aids. But, uh, we are still aiming for in October. But, uh, we are still aiming for an October review by the committees, so we're still working on the budget yet. Uh, the other item that we have, um, is that obviously we have a lot of construction going on, construction is moving forward pretty good. If you look into the city hall building, you'll see that they are framing the walls inside the mall building, and they're framing the offices in the, well, I think the police department's actually completely framed out. Um, and then I did see today now that they started on the first floor, city offices framing those out, so it's, it's moving. As far as I know, they didn't have any issues with horse and buggy days back in the fence up, and everything got paved and patched in the back parking lot, which was a good thing. Everything got paved on Lake Shore Drive with that project, which is a good thing. And they're proceeding with the treatment plant on schedule two, so. Things are going pretty good. The only, the only quick item, just to update, is kind of a minor one, but it's uh, a problem we had is on Friday, we found that somebody broke into the Little Red Schoolhouse, knocked out a bunch of the windows, got inside, um, so while we were already going to be looking at some freshening up over there, doing some repair, that's going to be sped up a little bit. So. Not the best of news, but the police department is on it, so that's a good thing, too.
Banalize anything, or what?
Uh, busting the windows out and moving around things inside is maybe the way I'll put it. That's all I've got.
All right, thank you.
Excuse me, I have a question. On budget, where are we at with the insurance?
Uh, we are supposed to, for health insurance, or insurance?
Health insurance.
With health insurance, um, we're supposed to find out before the end of this month, what our renewal rate is going to be with Anthem? Or what they're going to propose? Right now, I've penciled in probably about a twenty percent increase. Because that's sort of what we're starting to see, is a lot of the bigger companies have to apply for large increases through their states, or through the state commissioner insurance. And a lot of these bigger companies are going for twenty, twenty-five, thirty percent increases in Minnesota, Illinois. Starting to sort of connect the dots there a little bit, but.
So if we work on our budget library wise, then should we figure twenty-five percent possibly?
I did tell, I told, I told Christie to look for about a twenty percent
Twenty percent, okay.
Increase is what we're looking at now, now. That's just an estimate. Hopefully, within a, a week here, we should have the final number.
Thank you.
Okay, yep.
All right, chief.
Uh, Horse and Buggy Days was successful and uneventful. I went down to the band at eight o'clock, and everybody was happy, and it was nice. There wasn't any fighting, or bickering, or there was about the biggest issue we had were bees. And the other thing, um, today Officer Rowey, Dexter, Sergeant Leskey, and myself went to William Fletcher's office in Oshkosh. One thing I can tell you about Davis and Cuthols, they are very thorough. And that was in preparation for Wednesday's trial with Canadian National. So we're not gonna discuss our strategy here, obviously, but it was successful, and he's prepared, and we'll see what happens, and that's at ten thirty on Wednesday morning, the municipal court. That's all I have for you.
Thank you, chief.
Thanks.
All right, and you have other matters?
I'm just gonna add to Nick's, and that's why I said before, I think ordinances were, ordinances were made, and they were in there. And I also look, that's what my decision was paid on, based on the community, not just one, two, whatever the case may be, as I said. If we do something for one, we've had years where we've had, some of you guys know the chicken thing, and we had dog things, and so, next thing you know, everybody's gonna comment, hey, you changed ordinance for him, you changed ordinance for that one, you did this for that. So, you know, we gotta look at it as, is it benefiting the community? And that's how I was making my decision.
All right. Now we have to set meetings. Are we setting a, uh, special counsel for next Monday?
With those border review appointments, I think you're gonna have to.
We're gonna have to, okay. Six o'clock, okay with everybody?
Sure.
Okay with you, Patrick?
Six is great.
Six is great? Okay, six o'clock for special counsel?
I think everything else is already set, isn't it?
Well?
We've got Public Works, uh, Finance, and Public Works are the same night, but not a joint meeting. So five thirty Public Works, six thirty Finance on Monday, October twelfth.
On the twelfth?
And I will thank you for that, because that accommodates me being out of state until the eighth, so.
Okay. That's right. And we have Rec, and then Police on the thirteenth. Rec starting at six. Police to follow. And the fighting, fight your meetings on the twenty-ninth, correct?
Yes.
Is that the twenty?
Next week.
Next week. Is it the twenty-ninth or thirtieth?
Twenty-ninth.
Tuesday's twenty-ninth.
Tuesday.
That'll be their budget night. They did, I see now they sent out the agenda for that meeting and the budget, too, so.
Okay.
Okay, I haven't received it yet.
I'll print it, I can print Friday, too. They just sent it, just slipped through the hole.
I'll check in my mailbox tomorrow, see if I got it, I didn't check them out yet. I gotta check it days.
We need a public property or a planning commission?
Public property, for sure. Any dates?
Wanna run it right up to Finance, or what, Finance this time, or no, one or separate?
Maybe we run it like at five or something? We're down to the point now where the discussion on public property is pretty straightforward, so.
Do all three of them that night, on the twelfth? Is that what you're, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, good.
But not a joint meeting?
So we're doing what?
Property, Public Works, and Finance.
Who's on the public property committee? Scott?
Nope.
Keith?
Nope.
Shanie. Scott, Mike, and Shanie.
Scott, Shanie, and Mike.
All.
Be nice if that one could be later.
Yeah, I mean, you could do it later, you could do it another day, too.
So if it works? After the other two?
After's fine, too.
I can't do the five or five thirty one.
Right. But you'll be here at six thirty, though, right?
Yeah.
Or whatever.
Scott, you know, you could always try to slide it in between Police and Rec.
Yeah.
They're all fast meetings, if Scott's available on Tuesday, because Shanie and Mike.
He'll be there for.
Shanie's on Rec, Mike's on Police, so if Scott could come in, you guys could just.
There you go.
That work for you?
What day would that be?
That'd be Tuesday, the thirteenth. Easier? That way you're not, because Public Works and, and Finance tend to be so long. Do we need an ordinance?
We probably should.
Should have an ordinance? Wednesday, the fourteenth? Does that work for you? Works for you? I can't remember what Shanie's doing, to be honest with you. So let's, let's tend to be, schedule it for the six thirty on the fourteenth, and if Shanie has a problem, then we can just move it.
Six or six thirty?
I'm sorry, six?
Six.
Yeah, my bad. That it? All right. I guess, if that's it, I'll take motion to adjourn.
We can motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Can a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seven fifty.